All right, we'll call the December ninth, twenty twenty four, town council meeting to order. And we'll begin with a stand up with an opening prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Gracious heavenly Father, we'll just come before you and give thanks, Lord, in this joyous season. We just look to you as always, as our guiding light. Father, give us your peace and grace tonight. Lord, may our actions and our words give you honor and glory in all things, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Sherri, if you can do the roll.
Jim McClain.
Here.
Mike Amick.
Present.
Devin McGinnley.
Here.
Kerry Cole.
Present.
Joe Kane.
And we have one set of minutes that you should have reviewed up to this point. Anybody have to move, accept those?
Move accept.
Second. We have a motion and a second to accept and move the minutes from last month's meeting. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And then you have the claims in front of you for the previous month.
Make a motion, we accept the claims.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to accept the claims for last month. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passed, and then the financials are in front of you as well. Hopefully you got those reviewed.
I'll make a motion, we accept the financials.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to accept the financials for this month. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? We'll move on to the public hearing in front of us today for vacating a public way for Phil Schenk.
I emailed all, if you want to take one, pass it down. I don't think there's anything new in that. Mr. Schenk had filed a petition to vacate that alley between Front Street and the river. It's properly is on both sides. The town told me to go ahead and do this because you didn't think there was going to be any objections to it. So it has been properly put, noticed in the paper. And that's technically the ordinance that then follows the petition that is filed. It just discusses where it is, who was the petitioner, that it would vest in him afterwards, and it would be subject to his protection until he was still on there. And then we record that, so it is identical to other ordinances you've done to vacate public ways, alleys, streets, et cetera. So I don't know if there's any chance that anybody came to show objection. Did Phil, did he? He's not here. Did you tell him about it?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, you could table if you want, but I thought you wanted it done before the end of the year. Maybe you felt like there's really not much more to be said. I don't know. I've not talked with him recently.
Does he have to be here?
Doesn't have to be, no. You can pass it in his absence.
That's all.
He hasn't, but he knows he changed his mind. Oh, no, no, no.
And here, depending if you pass it, here's the original. If you want to sign it, you can have your own copy. Citing on the left in favor, if you vote that way. So we need a motion to... You might just ask, is there anybody attendance to object on this public hearing?
Is there anybody objects to this public hearing?
They have motion to accept the special ordinance vacating a portion of a public way in Cambridge City, ordinance number nine dash two zero two four.
Seconded. Have a motion and a second to implore with ordinance number nine dash two oh two four. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That is passed. And I don't think there's any other comments. If there's not, we'll close the public hearing at this point. Okay. Guest Charlie Ringwald wants to purchase property from the town on South Walnut Street.
And they gave everybody copies of it?
Did you get everybody copies?
I did, yeah.
Okay, so, yes, we just wanted to, we own the property adjacent to it, and we want to just purchase that so we can clean up the invasive species on it. And we'll see where we go from there.
There's a bunch of downed trees and stuff on it, and trying to take the honeysuckle out, trying to get a lot of mosquito, maybe living area, taken care of. And it kind of goes along with trying to just take care of a lighted property because it's, there's a lot of...
There's some old tires on it and stuff like that. We're just going to clean it up.
Concrete.
And we enjoy being out in the wooded areas too, so we...
So long we've been down this road before.
We have to put public notice in this. If the town chooses to abandon it, then you can direct me to put a notice to the public and send direct notice standing adjoining property owners. But then also it was in the paper to the general public. At that large, you need to put a minimum amount that you would be asking for on that. You can then give preference to an adjoining property owner as long as they pay that nominal or minimum amount. And that's how we would do for the next steps. So the first is decide, do you want to get rid of it? If you think there's some need to it, then we don't have to do anything else. But if you think there might be a chance to get rid of it, then just let us know. Then A, let A be, then decide what nominal price you want to put in on it, and then see if you'll go forward with the notices.
Well, I think it's property the town's controlled for a long time, probably hasn't maintained at all.
It's pretty well landlocked.
Yeah.
What is the access to the property? I mean, other than you're adjacent to it. So, but it shows on here that no properties actually are touching it, adjacent to it. Maybe it does.
What is that? There's an angler thing. Is that a unplanted alley or something like that?
On the...
Oh, okay.
So south of that...
I see where it is now. I got a different map than what they have.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So we own a thirty foot section of land on the backside of our property and Wanda Davis's property. So we have like a thirty foot easement, basically against it, yeah. That leads into it, from our other property. And then with this prop, the other property we own, the odd shaped one, there's a fifteen foot section that actually makes it out to the, to Walnut Street.
Do you own that house that is on Walnut Street then too? The, over there in the left bottom corner of your property? That little rectangle area? Because that looks like the only improvement that's close by. Is that yours?
No, that belongs to Fletcher Callahan. We own this property down here. And I didn't put it in there, but there's a thirty foot easement along the backside of our property and the neighbor's property that touches the back end of it.
So this is, this is yours? It's all, on, adjacent, it's all vacant ground?
Yes.
And then this is the Cambridge City town there?
Correct.
And do you know what this is? Is this...
That is owned by the person that owns this house here. That's Fletcher Callahan owns that. And that is, it's an old railroad easement that, the only reason he purchased this is because it, as you can see on this, it kind of cuts the corner of his house.
So is there any roadway at all to this property that you're wanting to buy? How would anybody get to it?
Yep, behind Millers.
I believe that...
It'd come in that way?
Yeah, this is, in Jones Street, if it extended down, it would go through this. And I don't think that the town's ever...
So that's a platted street but not paved or anything?
Right, right.
Was this an after?
Yeah, yeah. I only print a few copies of it, but... So that's, it's just about the same thing you already have. You have any questions?
This is Millers property.
Yes. This is the house on Fourth Street.
So is your house visible in here? Debbie was asking where your house was.
Our house is right here from the board. So, our house is right, this one right here.
This one, okay.
And Wanda Davis owns this, Fletcher Callahan owns this house and this.
Okay, so he owns that. Is this the piece you're wanting to buy? Is this one or this? This piece, okay.
This piece.
We've got two different maps here.
Yeah, it's, yeah.
So you're here, but you want this up. So is that connected to that?
This thirty foot section along the bottom here, we own this as well.
Okay, behind all three of those properties you own there.
So we can access that from the back end of our property.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, how you got to it, okay.
Yeah, there's a fifteen foot section that actually, on this property that we own, that goes out to Walnut Street. Fifteen foot wide section.
This piece or where?
Yes, that goes out to Walnut Street. And that's part of the property that's, that's, this is here, that's part of the property we own.
It's just crazy, yeah, it's all...
So this piece right here is owned by, this is a piece, and you own this whole section? You want to finish off this way?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Try to get the properties together.
Oh, I see.
Yep, okay.
Okay. Gotcha.
Yeah.
Any questions?
I don't think we can use any of that for anything other than beating up mower. We wouldn't even mow it.
No, you can't.
It's true.
Yeah, we could just tear up equipment if you try to mow it. Yeah.
If it could be cleaned up, that's great.
The plan is to go in and clean the Asian honeysuckles and the llanterns and some of the...
Get the tires and...
The old tires.
I ride my bike, but I'm...
The only thing I would ask while you're making this decision is, part of that adjoining property, there are trees like right next to ours that are already down. And we are in the process of cleaning it out. Would you object to us going in and cleaning?
Some of the downed trees.
Some of the trees that is right next to us, pretty much on the property line?
Yeah, on the...
Or just on the other side? We don't want to do that, and it's like, well, that's not yours. We want to make sure you're aware of it and make sure that that would be okay.
I didn't get that ARC survey, so I don't know exactly where that's at. So as we're cleaning this property up, we may, you know, I plan not to get too far into the Cambridge City properties, but I don't know exactly where it's at. So if there's downed trees and things, I may cut them, but I'm not gonna, yeah. Not gonna do too much over there.
Yeah, I'd say go for it.
Yeah.
Okay. And thank you. I improved the property down here for everything.
So you want to go ahead?
Yeah, I would.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's obvious it's going to be open for an open bid. I still understand that, but...
We understand that. We just wanted to get the process started.
What number do you want to put as a bottom line? That kind of a reserve on it?
I can't believe... You need to know that today.
Is it really assessed for seventeen thousand?
I don't think so.
It looks like a period rather than a comma, but that would be ten thousand dollars an acre for that one point seven acres.
Pretty extreme.
Yeah, I don't think it's...
Yeah, because your property is only assessed for forty nine hundred for the one point two three acres. So I'm a little confused on what that is.
Yeah, why would it be worth the three and a half times that value? When it's only half an acre, shy of a half an acre more?
Makes no sense.
So it's one point seven acres.
It's a nice round number for one point seven acre, but other than that, I don't see a correlation.
Well, I can, I can tell you I probably won't get seventeen thousand.
But we will do a good job cleaning it up.
We would have kept it though. Break your, we'd be okay with that.
We understand that.
We just want to clean that area up and have it be more of a respectful area.
And get the properties together to where it will have, you know, it would be more saleable.
Yeah, and continuity to it down there, that's, it's odd anyhow that we own that down in there.
Yeah, that whole area is kind of odd.
Yeah, it was railroad in property at one time, I think.
So do we need just consensus?
Yeah, it was railroad property at one time.
Right.
No consensus.
There wasn't a term style down there.
You probably ought to vote on the number that you want me to publish. And you can always negotiate up, or this is basically be your, the nominal amount that someone has to at least bid.
I imagine there might be some interest from others. The price is certainly a low enough number.
Yeah.
Anyway, we want people that are serious to...
Clean it up.
What I mean is, you don't want to put a hundred dollars out there and everybody...
No.
Bid a hundred dollars.
A hundred more, yeah, you could start a whole problem, man.
I mean, you could start seventeen hundred, that's just, you know, a thousand dollars an acre as a, as a number, but that's just thrown out random and I don't know.
Thoughts?
It's completely unapproved, right? I mean, there's no water line, there's no sewer line in there or anything.
There probably could be, right? Couldn't there be a water line?
We could run one in there.
What do you guys think? Go around number fifteen hundred?
I'm fine with that, yeah, fifteen hundred is a good round number.
Yeah.
But again, I still think there'll be some people interested, so I don't know.
Okay, I will put out public notice, so you can deal with that January immediately.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And what is your mailing address? Because we have sent you guys a notice.
Five oh four South Walnut Street.
Okay. All right, all good?
All good.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Moving on to unfinished business, we'll start with the progress report on the ongoing lighted properties. Ken, you got something for us there?
I've also, I've been in contact with a gentleman that owns Seven oh six West View up there. And that little house, and he said that he's probably going to have it sold within the next couple of weeks. And one of the people that's interested in it is the people that own the house next to it, and they're wanting to get it to tear the house down and everything to make their yard bigger. So, so something should be moving forward with that piece of property and that, because it's always, it's always been a combination between us having to mow it and then the condition of that house and that. Which me and Jim had talked, the house on Jones Street, the two twenty nine, we bordered up the doors and that because the police officers found there's been some activity going on in there. And the company that bought it on the tax sale, they have put a tarp over part of the roof, just trying to keep it secured until they can do something. And I'm trying to get ahold of the gentleman that bought it in the tax sale and giving him, because I found out the gal that actually owns it, an address for her to where maybe they could get something where they don't have to wait till like next fall to actually do something with that place. And then, you know, like I said, there's a house up on Vine Street that we put on the unsafe building list. They're working at taking that one down. You know, and which I put in my update to you guys last week, you know, the one by the liquor store's been brought down, and they're working at that. And then the one on East Church Street is down and filled in and seeded and sprawled, so.
Okay. The house on Main Street, I don't, I can't remember the number on it, the blue house there.
Blue house?
Yeah. I did, that guy contacted me again...
Did he?
On Friday. He's got a contractor coming in this week to get him estimate on repairing that house. And then he said their plan is to repair it and then put it back out on market. So I told him then, I said, well, if they're going to be there, they need to look at securing that back door. So he's, he's going to have them do that as well. So we need to check on that later this week, make sure that's done. But it was good that he, he contacted me. We didn't have to chase him down, so.
Yeah. That's positive.
Very positive.
But I think, well, you know, they said there's progress being made on a lot of stuff.
Okay, anybody have any questions? All right, moving on to the Wi-Fi in the park. There's a couple of things going on here. This, the Wi-Fi in the park was part of the help program. I talked to Jeff Plaster today. Unfortunately, this has given a low priority from them right now because there's so many other things that are, I think there's higher dollars tied to than this. And I told him I understood that, but we have some vandalism in the park we're trying to take care of, and he understood. What we ended up coming to was perhaps we could look at working with NLBC, getting it installed, painting it initially, and then billing the county for the installation part of it. And that way, it gets off their plate, and, but we can still move forward. So I told him we would, we would look into that. That's, that's, their quote was thirty five hundred dollars to do that for installation, so. But it would, I have a feeling if we waited on them, it's, it's going to be a while.
Yeah.
So...
Did they give a timeline?
No. Then from there, we'd have to, and that's why you guys all got quotes on the monthly fee after that. And we've talked about switching over to NLBC for our internet even in here, and then adding the park as well. And Sherri, I think you got some recommendations from...
RIT video.
From RIT guy, so do you want to share what that was?
Yeah, he said, if you, if you look at your quotes, he thought that the city building would, and the park would be good on the middle one, the five hundred by five hundred internet, which is two twenty nine fifty. And then he suggested the, the park alone on the hundred by one hundred at one twenty nine per month. He said, he just thought it would be, it makes more sense to go up the twenty dollars from the fifty by fifty because it was like, it was just the little, little, it was one seventy nine fifty or something like that.
So I'm not real familiar. I think the key to getting for in the park is that we have, the signal goes out far enough that we're able to put, you know, Wi-Fi cameras into it, so.
Look, look at the, the, the beam on this, on the west side and that area down there too, or?
But that's what, that's what I don't know. You know, I, I think we maybe need to go back to NLBC and say, this is what we want to do. We want to be able to put a camera here and here. Will this, will this reach there?
Should we see if they come in for a meeting of some sort?
Yeah.
We can, so we, in the process of going through all this, I tried to call a gentleman I'd been talking to, and he no longer works for NLBC. So I had to go into another guy. He got, he got, I sent him the quotes, he got back to me in a half an hour, so I felt pretty good about that. And he said they're going to stand by these quotes. So I, I do think they, and he said on his email back to me, they're, they're ready to go whenever we are. So I'm, I know they're anxious as well, so I think he would come in and, and talk to us here. You think that's what we did?
I think we should do it as quickly as possible. Right. Go ahead and have him come in.
Now, that's the Wi-Fi part.
Yeah.
What about the camera part?
Well, the cameras, I think, would just be Wi-Fi enabled.
Sure.
That would connect to it, so we'd have to...
But powered?
Yeah.
Up that high?
Yeah. They'd have, I mean, I don't know. I guess they'd have to give us a recommendation on that.
We could probably get some consulting from the person that put in the cameras the last time. I think he still does that type of work. Does the installation probably, but we do some consulting on it.
Yeah.
If you guys are interested in that.
We want to have cameras on the east side of the park as well, right? So we need a pretty wide coverage here, I think, you know?
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think we got to get an expert in here to give us some ideas.
Then on the east side.
That's what I was thinking.
Over by the dock source.
It's more remote from everything.
We'd have to probably at least reach the bridge, you know, so we could see that, that side of the park.
Yeah.
Does the installation cost just cover Wi-Fi, or does it cover cameras or electric?
It doesn't cover anything.
Do you have a program or a budget for that?
We don't.
Do you have any other comment?
There's about three thousand dollars.
That's probably a couple of cameras.
There's going to be... We'll have three thousand, three hundred seventy two hundred forty six.
Because we're going to need power, we don't have any cameras. Unless there's power up on whatever poles that might go on.
So what, what do you want me to do? Perhaps you want me to have him come in for one of these meetings? Or just come in and talk to a couple of people?
I think just a committee or a couple of people.
Just a committee.
I'll be happy to help.
Just to get it done.
Okay. I'm sure they will do that.
So is it NLBC or is it?
NLBC.
So that's like in the Wi-Fi part. And then Richard's, what about the camera and electric work? I don't know.
Does NLBC have somebody in house that does that kind of stuff?
They probably do.
I wonder if Dwayne Fultz would advise us in any way?
Who?
Dwayne Fultz, from Censor?
Oh, I don't know, maybe.
Or the person you're mentioning?
Censor, Censor would probably do it also, but I don't know how busy they are currently, but wouldn't hurt to maybe get a couple opinions on it.
I'll be glad to help him out.
I think we start with the Wi-Fi and see where that is, and see if he's got recommendations.
Yeah, we'll see if they have recommendations.
Okay.
We need Jim and Richard.
Yeah.
And the cameras are pointless without the Wi-Fi, so we need to get that going.
Yeah.
I think we could probably get some donations too, toward the cameras, if there's people interested in...
Okay. All right, I'll, I'll talk to him, get, get him set up to come in, and I'll let everybody know. I'm sure he'll come in yet this month.
Great. Good.
Well, about the lights in the park?
I, I hanged down early last week, late after dark, to see, tried to find some dark spots. And in the process, found some lights that are not working, and a couple more that are on Duke's end to fix. And they, I've reported them, so they should be coming in to fix those. And I found two lights down by the small concession stand that are ours. And I'm still trying to figure out if they're on or off, or where they turn on and off at.
Over by the shelter over here or?
No.
Oh, right by the ball?
By the, by the ball diamond. There's two, two lights back there. And then me and Richard talked about it, and he's, he was going to talk with his guys that work nights to sort of give us an input where they feel we need some lighting over there.
And how many, how many lights that are Duke's are up there that are burned out?
There are two right now.
Have they been fixed yet? Did you report?
Not yet. I, I reported them, but they've not been fixed yet.
Okay.
And then I, I've also talked with a gentleman from Duke. And once we've decided where we want lights, they've got a consultant that will come in and meet, would come in and meet with me and say, basically, let me know, would it be more beneficial for us to put up lights in, or Duke would, would do it?
Okay.
Because some, some of the lights, especially if we put some over on the east side...
That's, that's where...
That's, we're talking, they're having to run electric to, to be able to even light them up.
Well, it needs to be done.
That's, yeah, that's what we got to do, we need to do it.
When you can stand here and see nothing but darkness over there.
Where's most of the vandalism been in the park?
Well, I mean, as long as it's been the Christmas light stuff. And it's, and a lot of it's been on the east side, but... All over.
On the east side?
They actually hit the Santa Claus right here outside the building and tore lights off, actually tore them off, tore the lights off of it.
When did that one happen?
That was Saturday.
It's past Saturday?
Or was it, was it Friday?
First, it was the first night.
It's first night, yeah.
Before?
Yeah.
Before the...
Yeah. They've had damage every night, it's like, uh, everywhere that, they gotta go find cords, put the cords back on. They're ripping lights off, throwing, throwing decorations on the ground, that's, put them back up. It's, uh, it's all over the park.
Is it worse than prior years?
It's, this, last year we started, and this got worse this year. Before, before last year, we never had any problem.
It's, it's the same group of kids.
Yeah.
It's a handful of kids that are creating all the problems, so.
But this year, now you've got the gates open, right? So you guys can.
Well, it did start out the gates open, but we do have them open now.
I had the guys leave the gates open, but the lights are up, so the police can get in and drive through randomly.
Yeah. Richard and I talked about that. That, you know, it's kind of an issue when they're having something going on in there, you gotta stop, open the gate and go in.
That's why I told the guys just leave them up to play with them anymore until the lights were taken down.
So some of it was done right here where there are lights.
Yeah, yeah. That's why I hope there's a, I came in the building, but it don't went that way.
Well, we have one, but it doesn't go that far. Need those cameras. The one at the door, that's what he's asking, if that camera worked.
I didn't know how.
We don't have one here.
That can be, that can be fixed for you.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm just trying to think, what can we do immediately?
Well, I think, you know, we talked about the, the hours of the park. We had that discussion, and I think Bob can maybe give us clarification on this. You know, the ordinance says the park is closed from October thirty-first to March first, I think it was. That's just all it says. But then when you look at the signs on the park, it says those same dates, but it says just to motor vehicle traffic.
Yeah.
So we were always under the impression that as long as they were on foot, it's okay to still be in there. You just can't drive your car in there, and that's why they locked the gates. It needs to be, it's just closed, period.
Although you want people to go through there for Christmas?
Well, with those exceptions, correct.
So you don't want people walking with their dogs or anything else during that?
I mean, I don't, I don't see any reason for somebody being in the park at ten o'clock at night on December the third.
Daylight hours is fine, I think. Don't do a lot of damage in daylight hours.
If, if we restricted the hours, if we could even, we talked about that even, maybe making it close at sunset, like the cemetery, like the cemeteries do.
Could we get some additional signage that says the park is closed?
Better.
I mean.
What kind of, what kind of?
By signs, by police order.
The signs that are up will still contradict what it says.
If you leave out the signs, maybe that'll.
Except for after, after sporting events, there's people that walk through the park to go home.
But we don't, we don't have that issue in the wintertime, there's no sporting events, so this is just, we're talking about.
I meant, I meant, uh, people at the schools that are participating in events have to walk to the other side of town. They go across the bridge, how do they?
I, I, I think we have to use some, you know, some discretion here. If they're walking through, not stopping, they're just passing through, then, then I think we can allow that. But if they're congregating in the shelter houses or doing, you know, other things, then that's the issue.
I meant if you, if we close it down completely with signs that says.
Well, we have kids that walk to school every day.
To and from school too, so.
They, they gotta be able to, they're like kids, go to school that way.
I don't, I don't think we need to restrict that, as long as they continue to move.
Shall no loitering in the park?
No loitering, yeah.
Is that a, yeah, is it a loitering?
Maybe that's the.
Issue.
That's the issue.
I think the kids, Richard wants to make sure he's good to go in there and tell them they're not allowed in the park.
All right. We had a guy, you know, last week in there at almost eleven o'clock, went and played frisbee golf. Well, all of you know how dark it is, so you, you're not gonna be able to do that anyway. And there's no reason for someone to be in there, you know, in the first week of December playing frisbee golf at eleven o'clock at night.
Well, technically, I mean, you can keep them out right now, because technically, it does say that it's only open eight till eleven, March first through October thirty-first. It's now past October thirty-first, no one should be in the park.
Right, but our issue is the signs at the park contradict what that says.
So we need to fix the signs or, or do something, so.
Let's get new signs.
Yeah, let's get new signs. Have the signs match the ordinance?
Yeah, match the.
Do we want us, do we want to restrict it shut completely, or do we want to say, you know, it's open till, you know, sunset
during, during those timeframes?
For both pedestrian and vehicle? That just, pedestrian.
We, we have a lot of, during, during daytime, eat lunch, after lunch break, they'll go get lunch and go in there and eat. Obviously, those aren't, those people aren't the problem.
How many can we have in there? I mean, well, if we have, you know, just pedestrians, or pedestrians and vehicles, or no vehicles except during certain times when we have Christmas lights up, I mean, how many if this, then this, how many options can we have in there in an ordinance before it becomes muddy and kind of ridiculous?
Yeah, the ordinance does say that the park commissioner, through the park committee, can always override this for special occasions.
But it also says if there's park employees or something do, you know, that kind of stuff to you, which I don't know if the Christmas lights would apply to that or not, but.
They're technically city employees.
I mean, yeah, they are, and basically, you guys, you guys are at the park entrance, correct?
When it's open, other than between Christmas and New Year's.
So we do have some control of that, but.
And realistically, all it's gonna do is enable you to enforce it. I don't think any sign or ordinance is gonna keep kids who are vandalizing it out.
No, it will, but it will allow us to.
You know, at ten-thirty at night, I, I can say you're not supposed to be in here. Not, right, as it stands right now, I don't feel that we can do that, because the ordinance con, the sign contradicts the ordinance.
To me, the simplest thing is to get new signs to say, instead of vehicular traffic, to say the park is closed during these, these nights.
Yeah, and then we do a public notice or something from the park committee that during the time we had the Christmas lights up or something during certain hours.
So then that will keep any pedestrians out of it during the daytime for those month winter months?
Again, I think we.
Is that what you want? We could use some discretion in, if they're just passing through.
That's what I said, it's gotta be something to do with loitering, that they can't just go in and hang out for.
It's hard to make the kids walk all the way around the park to get to school.
Right.
It's not fair.
With dogs or whatever.
Right.
There, there are times in the morning when kids are walking to school, and they do congregate in the shelter house before school. So that does happen. Not, not every day, but.
So we did.
Well, it sounds like the consensus would be that during those winter hours, it's okay to have pedestrians in during the daylight hours, still no vehicle. After eleven, then it's nobody at all, vehicle or pedestrian, other than Christmas special, and then make a sign that's consistent with that rule.
And even if somebody after a basketball game is walking through there, it wouldn't be that way.
No.
No, I agree with that, yeah.
I think most of the damages happen between probably six and eleven, or, you know, have to go home. The kids have to go home soon.
Yeah, at some point.
But I think most of the damages probably between six and eleven.
It's, it's definitely after dark.
It's after dark, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, then maybe you want it not be at eleven, just allow pedestrians till six.
Six, I think.
I think that would be better suited.
During, during that timeframe from October thirty-first to March first, but.
Some kids get in trouble, the rest of the kids stay out.
Pedestrians only from dusk to dawn, uh, from dawn to dusk? Is that what you're saying?
I, that, that makes more sense to me.
So that does allow them to walk to school, to and from school.
I think that makes more sense. And people.
You're gonna have, if we cut it completely off, you're gonna have a bunch of mad parents down here, you know, saying, why can't my kid walk through the park, so? And, and typically, those aren't, those aren't the ones we're having problems with, but.
So Bob, what do we have to do to make that change?
I break this ordinance and you pass it?
Have you got all those parameters?
I do. I think all we have to do is amend it, that we allow pedestrian type traffic from.
So what do you, what do you think until that's done?
Bob, about?
Take the sign down.
Take the sign down, I mean, that makes the most.
Yeah, take the sign down. They can enforce this the way it is right now.
Let's do that. That helps us immediately if you take the sign down.
Yeah, yeah, because we don't get it done for a month, it's pretty.
Yeah, yeah, the lights will be over, right?
I think the park commissioner can make the decision to take those signs down, correct?
Yep.
Debbie?
Take the signs down.
Can we, can we get a couple of signs that say closed?
To, to put on the gates or something, or, they already have signs on them, but it just says park, doesn't it? Doesn't say closed.
Do we have any signs that say closed? Like, did, did we use that for the cemetery? Didn't we have signs that said closed on the cemetery gates?
Road closed.
Well, I would have to dig through signs that are in the basement, see if there's anything that says closed. Maybe buy them at a hardware store, pretty cheap.
It says closed, right?
Yeah, that's true, yeah, they're cheap.
I'm sure you can get them at Lowe's or Gilman's or any place like that.
Dollars for a mine, you know.
Buy some ladders and some, uh, extruded plastic.
Might be easier just to buy one and take a look.
I think we've got a solution for this right now. And Bob, you're gonna come up with a?
I will. I may have a, your special meeting at the end of the year when we do salaries.
Okay, that'd be, that'd be great.
That'll help you from lighting.
Yes, it did. Good discussion.
Okay, moving on. Next up is rescinding the teardown order of four eleven, four fifteen West Front Street.
All you need is a verbal motion to rescind, also known as revise, revoke, cancel your prior confirmation of unsafe building order for those two properties.
So, what?
Second?
We have a motion and a second to rescind the teardown order on properties of four eleven and four fifteen West Front Street. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
That was a good win.
That's, yeah, that's, that's a good win.
They look, they look good.
Next up is a BZA appointment for the Board of Zoning Appeals. Susie Dungen is resigning, and that position is assigned by the council. And I think Debbie had somebody she's.
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Frank Bratton, he's interested. I think that's the only one we have.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Uh, do we need a second for the nomination, or what?
Yeah, we need a second.
I'll second.
Okay.
All right, we have a nomination of Frank Bratton for the, be appointed to the Board of Zoning Appeals. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So be it. It's a good appointment.
Yeah.
Moving on to new business. So town elections currently are on odd years, and most years, we are the only election. The county, the counties come to us again, asked if we'd be willing to move those to even years, so they wouldn't have to run an election just for Cambridge City on those years. I know this was brought up three years ago, I think, and the consensus then was they don't like changing anything, but.
They did give a reason again.
Did they give a reason why they wanted to?
I give some historical perspective. For at least the last forty-six years, it's been this way, and historically, many communities do it this way. And their reasoning was that it allowed people to focus on just the town races rather than getting lost with all the advertising for state, federal offices. Now, I'm not saying that's good or bad, but that's, that was the theory at those times, so that they would have their own elections on the off years. And it worked, it probably has gone a hundred years maybe for towns, but gradually, because of the, you know, how efficient things were, clerks' offices have tried to get you guys to get off of that and go on. And every time it's been brought up to this council, they've said, no, we're just like keeping it on, on those years. Now, you cannot change anybody's current term, even if you do decide. You have to, well, actually, those four, those four years. If you choose to change it, you would have to then implement it at the next election, and have somebody just elected for three, the next one, another three, until you got them all set out. Because you may remember that your clerk treasurer and three of you are voted on at one time, the other two of you are the other ones, so that you never could have a complete change of the guard, and that they would be staggered, and so I think you'd want to keep that one.
So we have two coming up next year, and they would effectively just be for three years, if, if we make the change.
If you made the change, yeah. And then you would do, the, the others, at the end of their term, would have to be either one or three. Well, no, the next, because then they're still on odd years.
Yeah.
So they would have to do three, too.
Okay.
So most towns have gone to?
Around here, I think, if the clerk's office says you're the only one, but there, I know there are some still in, throughout Indiana that still have them on the odd years.
I get the reason. I mean, we can't get people to vote for town elections when, when we have a big election. You know, people don't know, they don't even know who's running. You don't get people to even run for office, it's hard to even find, you know, find people to sit here.
So are you saying you understand the reason for keeping them alive?
I understand the reason for keeping it on the odd year, yeah. It, it puts some focus on our election. Whereas, like I said, we get drowned in the, in the noise otherwise.
That was the theory.
And also, we, I don't know how we exactly run, but to me, local politics should be not party-related, they should be specific to the town and the value needed in the town.
But that's, that's a good point.
Many of us run as independent, or, which I think, I think it takes party politics out of it. I think if we go into an even year, party politics will in turn. That's just a hypothesis, not, it's just an opinion. I just, I agree with the efficiency reason, though, but, so I'm sort of, I'm caught.
But whose efficiency, I mean?
The clerk's office.
Just the clerk's office, yeah. But I understand why they want to do it, why they.
You pay them something.
Well, sure, yeah.
Yeah, we pay them.
Five thousand?
Yeah.
Don't we pay them? Wouldn't we still have to pay even if we were on an even year?
Well, that's probably true.
Well, it wouldn't be as much, because they wouldn't have to hold a special election and bring all the workers in and everything else, so before, if they've already got the workers there.
That's true.
We don't, we won't have that big portion to pay, we'd split it.
Is there an opportunity for any special election to happen in that timeframe either? Like a levy, a school board thing, not a position on the school board, but I mean.
I don't know.
Or like if, if we had a decision we need to have voted on by the public?
In the end, it's hard to have referendums compared to other states, I know.
That's the term.
But I mean, we could hold a referendum on our odd election year if we.
I suppose, just kind of for public opinion.
Right, yeah, it's something.
You're gonna have a special election for referendum and not a whole election. Be a little odd.
I mean, they'll continue to do the election, you know, even if you choose to still leave it the way it is.
I'll be honest, I hadn't thought of what Jim, what Jim's statement was, like, you know, I hadn't, I hadn't considered that, and.
Well, it puts the focus on, why are you going down there to vote? Am I going down there to vote because I, I'm for this guy that's running for governor or president? Or am I going down there to vote because I want the streets cleaned up and the trash picked up? You know, and who's the best person for that job? None of those things. Who's the president of the United States makes no difference in that, you know?
Jim, when you ask about other town, when I talk about Wayne County, town and cities have not. So the city of Richmond is still on the odd years for the mayor's race, and I think, so I think most cities still do that. And so it would only be the smaller towns that I think the clerk's office is trying to escape the responsibility.
I'd like to sleep.
I'd sleep. I don't want to get lost in the big election.
I don't know.
Not for the, just local community, I agree with what you said.
Yeah.
I agree with you.
No change?
No change.
I'll let her know.
Answer to your question is? No.
No. Sorry.
And sorry. Next up, a motion to approve canine donations?
Yes, Seth's been working on his book with the dog, and we've got a total of thirty-nine hundred that was donated for his donations to go towards purchasing of the books. So I wanted to get that approved.
Okay. Just need a motion to accept that approval?
Yes, sir.
That donation?
That donation.
I'll make a motion, we accept the donation, what was it?
Thirty-nine hundred.
Thirty-nine hundred dollars. For the canine books.
Have a motion, a second to accept the thirty-nine hundred dollars for donations for the canine books. All proof, all in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Passed. Bob, next up's EDA grant administration, did anything come of that, and those emails with Ron and?
Well, I did send an email today with the resolution.
Got you.
I copied mine, Bob.
Oh, did you?
Yes. I saw it.
I thought we had maybe had done this, I know you talked about it in principle, and that is, the land that your new water tower is going on, it's actually coming from the county. So the county's got to deed that over to the town, um, they're charging ten dollars, so that's pretty fair, almost a gift. Um, but we need a resolution to accept that, and the county will pass something almost identical to it. I think everybody'd like to close before the end of the year, so since being the last official month of the meeting, um, I presented this resolution for the approval of accepting that one acre parcel from, um, the county in order to build the water tower.
It is gonna cost us ten dollars.
Where's that gonna come from? We're gonna pay for it. We're at the end of the year.
Can't tab with questions.
Yeah.
Is this being managed through the EDC, or is it purely through the county council?
Well, this particular transfer is just county and town, but then as far as the money for the construction is all part of our major water project.
I understand, I just, being on the EDC, I just needed to know how I could vote or not vote.
I think, oh yeah, EDC is not a party to do this.
This makes sense, gotta do it.
What's the resolution number?
I'll ensure for the, a new ordinance number, so I'll actually resolution.
Uh, six.
Resolution six.
And here's the original again, so you guys can keep your copies, that one can be sent.
So I need a motion to.
Approve.
Approve Resolution six.
I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution six, twenty twenty-four.
Second?
Have a motion, a second to approve Resolution six dash twenty twenty-four, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So that's for the land, correct? What about, is there anything on the contract with the demonstration?
As far as anything else to take action right now, I don't know.
No, okay. Yeah, I know there's, there's still some, uh, working things going on there, last I heard, so.
And with a chance, I want to talk with you, who's gonna get, you know, that whole list, make or tell, he wanted, so that we're not duplicating efforts, I can get some of it, you guys can get some of it and send it over.
Okay. And, I think I have one thing written down.
Yes.
Oh, you already got that, that's it, oh.
Yeah, you said you'd go ahead and tell us that.
Yeah, so we had a, we got the bill for the asbestos abatement. We're gonna need to go ahead and pay that, and then we'll get reimbursed from the EDC, correct?
Yes.
For this.
See, we don't have any, we don't have any funds to just pay for the teardown or for that, so that's kind of threw me off, you know, having to come up with the money first, and then to get reimbursed for it.
Do we have some added money we can use, or even rainy day money?
Rainy day money.
Do you use rainy day money, then reimburse rainy day when you get reimbursed, that is what I, you know?
Okay, that's kind of what we thought.
Yeah.
Now, will we have to do that on the teardown as well, or when, when will we get the money for that?
She talked about it being almost immediate, once the bills were submitted, it would be real quick.
They just don't have the details worked out yet on how the payment's gonna be, that's why we have to do it this way this time.
So it may not be by the end of the year?
Yeah.
I can contract, you can ask.
No, I, I just didn't know what I, I'd expect it, okay. Okay, cool, do that.
And what else do you have, is that it? Oh, no, the.
This is Richard, it's on the state, the posts.
You want to talk about those?
The posts?
The posts.
For your signs? Are you lining those posts?
Yeah, so we did have to purchase some, the digital speed limit signs, we had to purchase a couple posts, the breakaway post per, um, regulations of NDOT. Um, I don't remember what the, was it three?
Um, three forty ninety-eight.
So I don't know where those funds need to come from, or.
Won't we just take that out of the ARPA funds?
Perfect. Okay.
Does that make sense?
It's the ARPA you have to use before the end of the year.
Yeah.
Yeah, or.
And you still have some left?
Yeah.
Around thirty, three thousand dollars.
Three thousand, three hundred and something.
Yeah.
Which.
Could you want to prove that, not deny it at your next special meeting, so that's.
To get rid of the rest of it.
Yeah.
Because I gotta do a report.
Well, it sounds like we need some lights, so I think we'll.
Yeah. And how much is the post?
But I won't have a contract though, or anything, I mean, I have to have a.
Need to place an order, you need to commit.
We can buy the lights.
Can you write a contract? I mean, would you be able to?
Yeah, if you'll tell me who's in it.
Uh, just whoever.
To Dee Dee Herman, not a two-year term contract?
No, we're gonna spend that three thousand, so if not, we have to give it away.
And we might, you know, maybe that's what we use for the wifi, putting the wifi out there too. So, I don't think there's any problem.
Well, why don't you authorize, authorize your president to go out there and buy something for some of that remaining money about some of the things you've discussed today?
Yeah, our security program.
Yeah, yeah.
There you go. Okay, I need a motion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We need a motion to authorize me to purchase.
Three thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars.
Of security. Equipment.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
And this will come out of ARPA.
Okay.
Minus, minus what's coming up for the polls.
Yes.
Yes, whatever's left.
Whatever's left, yeah.
So we have a motion, a second authorizing the town executive to spend the remaining ARPA money on security equipment for the park by the end of the year.
That's exactly right.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And ideally, since it's a nominal amount, you only need to get a couple quotes, but it's always advisable to get a couple quotes because you're buying eight products or, or purchasing internal policy.
Because the hundred and fifty thousand is what's going to Pride Mark, right?
Yes.
And then we'd be done with that one. Okay, perfect. That makes him want to read better, you know? Okay, cool.
All right.
That's all we got.
Staff reports.
Richard, speaking of the signs, they should be installed tomorrow, I believe, the, the bases were put in today. There was some discussion whether we should concrete them or not, and I think they elected to do concrete, so it delayed another day, but, um, I think we'll start seeing them put up tomorrow, so.
And is the guys doing them, you got, you and the guys, or?
Um, Joe and the, Joe and the guys have been doing them, I, I've offered to help, but they don't really need my help, I guess, so.
Well, that's nice.
Hopefully, hopefully tomorrow, I think you'll maybe see them installed, so we'll.
You might remind the public where they're going?
Yeah, one is going, uh, for westbound traffic in front of the Golei Center, um, and the other one for the eastbound traffic will be at the library.
So both on the forty?
Correct.
Nice.
Good deal.
I saw the bikes marked, the markings.
Yeah, if you drive by around, you can see it, it'll stick in the ground with the base posts, so.
That's nice, okay.
Anything else?
Um, I just had one thing about that.
So we're having some, a couple parking issues, um, gonna see about getting with Ken or whoever, about doing some, painting some curbs, they all paint, maybe that, maybe this isn't the best time of year to do that, um, I don't know. If, if it'll stick in the winter months or not, but.
Depends, I forget, if we got some warm weather, probably.
I'll, I'll just talk to them, get them about that, where it's, it's nothing pressing, so.
I can probably guess where you're talking about.
There's a couple spots, yeah. Um, that's really all I have, we covered everything else?
All right, thank you. Jeff, fire chief?
Uh, we need to revisit ordinance for, uh, false alarms. We're making a lot of trips to, um, recovery works, they can't seem to get the people without smoking the building, they're setting off the alarms, we're out there for absolutely nothing because, end up go, go, do a walk through to the building and it's time to equipment and manpower.
Then we had the, after two warnings, they were paying for your.
Whenever they get, whenever they get the orders completed, they're back to the.
It didn't pass?
No, it needs to go back to the board and.
Can we resurrect that?
Yeah.
I think, I think we need to, to add.
Yeah, we need to jump on board with that as well, we got several places that we continually get alarms on, that we respond to, and most of the time a key holder does not show up, um, so we're, you know, taking care of it ourselves. Sometimes, sometimes multiple alarms in the same night, but.
So what was decided?
Them, just two alarms and then they.
Two alarms, two alarms, maybe we start getting, uh.
A charge.
Charge, I think it.
I thought I remembered prepared it, did they just decide not to?
They never, I don't think they ever got passport.
I don't, I don't remember.
It was gonna be, it was gonna get larger after the third one.
I remember talking about it.
We did, several times, but I don't remember.
I'll pull it out again, we can reintroduce it maybe later this month. And I, I forget, did we fine them, or did we have?
It was gonna be the third time, I think what we talked about was the third time they would start paying a fine, and then the fines would continue, would start to, would grow for additional calls.
Is that like the third time in a year, or third time ever?
I think third, third time in a month it would start.
Oh, a month, wow.
They're happening that often.
Huh?
They're happening that often. We have to do something about that, that's ridiculous.
Yeah, just, you know, we're just doing a lot of trips out there, and you know what happens is, the guys decide that's what it is, and then you wind up not having a whole lot of help.
Well, at some point, yeah, at some point, people aren't gonna go.
I'm not sure, third time, month's the way to go, I think it should be third time period.
Oh, okay, I mean, it's.
Because they're not correcting the problems, and so.
Yeah, that gives them two freebies as well.
Absolutely, yeah, so.
Yes, four calls a year.
Yeah, I, I agree, I wouldn't say over twenty years or something.
I'm not sure, like the city of Richmond, I don't.
They do, do that as well, maybe we can take a look at their ordinance, see how they.
I think there's an annual.
Annual.
Is it annual? I, I.
Annual, annual would be a lot better, I mean, I just did a lot of.
How many times do you get called out in a week when they say?
We've been, we're going out there a couple times a week, seems like, you say? You know, usually here is going, and. It's getting worse, it's colder now, they don't want to be outside, they just, uh, they just don't do, they don't do anything about it, it's internally.
I'll, no, I think that it's been prepared, but I'll make sure it says all of that, and then I'll send it to everybody.
Annual would be great.
Yeah. Cut down on your call. Help you keep people on board.
Yeah, yeah, it's just, it's just really tough, you know, broken bad, you know, it's, it's, sometimes I like trucks, you know, it's more reasonable, it's just.
All right. You got that one, Bob?
So we could include, you could include Richard in, in on that as well.
For false alarm.
Please enter.
Please enter. Okay.
Anything else?
I think everything else is working, but.
You got a new roof.
Got a new roof. I don't have to wear an umbrella.
Looks nice, look, please.
Looks nice.
Looks really nice.
He said, I wish I would have done the black soffit or whatever, but he said, we could change it later.
Yeah.
I'm sure it'll cost us, but.
It still looks really nice.
Looks very good.
And the emergency siren still has not been.
Still have not been.
Okay, I did bring it up to the county commissioners, and, um.
Because the problem is in the city, isn't it?
Yeah.
Dispatch?
City building.
Dispatch.
House branch, okay. I said city building.
It's yours all.
They were gonna go to M A, but I haven't heard back from them, so I, it has been run up the ladder.
So has your guys been trained to turn it on?
Couple of, so I want everybody sticking their hands in that box. You know, it's, it's not a good idea.
Yeah, but, but if it happens, somebody's.
We'll get it.
I, I have heard a couple times, uh, Wednesdays at, at noon.
I know.
It's not consistent every, every week, but I have heard it recently.
And it's been pushed every week, so I mean, that's my question, and that's the problem, it's a hit or miss, so you don't know when it's gonna miss.
I don't know, it went off the other day, I couldn't hear it at my house, but Kareem texted me and said, do you hear the alarm? And I couldn't hear it at my house, but it was going off, and you could hear it.
You should be able to hear it, Richard.
Yes.
I'll just have to.
Keep on them.
I'll stay on them as best I can. All right, uh, Ken, what do you have for us?
Uh, the only thing I've got was just a form, um, we advertised for the community crossings grant, for the bit, taking the bids on it, and we'll be opening those bids on December eighteenth. And then the only other thing I've got is I've got, it's the same agreement we have every year with Choice One to, they basically administer everything and that, and I just, I just need to get your signature on this, so I can get it back to Choice One.
For a community crossing grant?
Yes, yeah, it's, like I said, it's the same agreement we've had with them for.
Bob, do you want to review that first, or?
Yeah, if you have it, we can.
You have anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay, we'll let Bob review that, and then we'll get it signed off back to you.
Do they, would this be acceptable to do at our next special meeting?
On the salary ordinance, it's December thirtieth. Do they need it, by the way?
I mean, I, I just.
We just, they, they get it by the end of the year.
Yeah, I, I'll just let Luke know.
Scan it right to them, yeah. You might copy me on that as well, and then.
All right.
Yeah. Thank you, Bob, that could be.
That's fine, yeah.
Did, did you?
Yeah, because this is a sixty-five hundred dollar contract, so. Do you know how that compares to what they charged this year?
Uh, it's probably about the same, because they're, like I said, I think if they sort of just keep the same agreement every year.
I can look.
Yeah, that does kind of.
I can look. It does?
Yeah.
But I can look back and see.
Yeah, I've got to think this is for their next year, so if you, if we get to them before the end of the month, they should be.
Anything else?
Nope.
Light?
I'm good.
Debbie?
Nope.
Karen?
Good.
Jim? Uh, we do have our special meeting December thirtieth, uh, we don't have a time set for that, though, to say.
We were, we were waiting on, Bob, can you check your schedule, five or six?
Either one.
Okay, it's up to you, five or six?
Five.
Five?
Five.
I agree.
Five.
Richard?
Better, you're the better.
Ken, ARPA?
All right, special meeting December thirtieth.
That's our salary ordinance.
And I entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
What's your?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.